All right, I call this city council meeting and executive session on October first, twenty twenty four. To order, with Sam and do the flag suit. Ready to begin?
I would like to be consistent by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in whose justice we trust.
We'll do roll call and attendance, it looks like we're, we have an excuse to have since with this Heather Baumgartner.
Brenda's right there.
Brenda's on there.
She's right there.
Oh. So Brenda's here. Okay, so we, those are, that's our attendants. So we'll move right to the approval of the minutes, city council workshop minutes, September third, twenty twenty four.
I moved to approve the minutes of September third, twenty twenty four, city council workshop, we're doing the workshop then?
Yes.
Workshop as presented.
I second it.
I have a motion to second, is there any discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? City council meeting minute, September third, twenty twenty four.
I moved to approve the minutes of September third, twenty twenty four, city council regular meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
They have a motion to second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? City council work session with Boardman Parks and Rec District Board minutes, September seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
I'd like to move to approve the city council workshop minutes from September seventeen, September fourth. The question.
You said it right. So I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion?
I just have a question about that specific one, um, and I don't even know if this is the appropriate time to ask is about, um, are we gonna get any updated information about what we discussed about that work session?
Mm-hmm. That's fair.
When it's available, okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, financial report.
Evening, in front of you are your financials and the August thirty first, twenty twenty four. Um, as I pointed out, our interest rates remain steady. It's online, not in front of them. Oh, well, um, it's on. It's online.
On the agenda.
Yeah, in the packet.
My agenda has been taken through the throne.
Refresh your page.
The next one.
There it is, that's fun.
The next.
So five A. You click on the blue A.
Yeah, it's, uh, twenty twenty four.
So we have to go and look under the, the city council.
Go to, um, agenda right there, PDF.
It go to this one.
Sorry.
Sorry. You wanna look at the packet, not the agenda. So hit the back. Yep, on that one, the black one. Is that open?
It's gonna be page eleven.
And then you can scroll down and click right on the, on those documents.
You know, when did you put this on here?
August five forty-five this evening.
Okay, because I was on there.
I know.
Okay, just saying.
Me too. I know. Hey, um, our interest rates for July and August remain steady, there was no change. I tried to log into our different accounts to see what they had done for September, since September is the month where they're supposed to start to come down. Um, but none of our banks or financial institutions had anything of it. Um, some of them were actually down, because I think they're processing for bank statements. So I don't have enough data for September, but July and August remain the same. Um, and we did have a huge influx of revenues, um, in our general fund. Um, we didn't get the congressional community project funds come in. And so, um, as I put in my notes, here in the next meeting, we'll have to do a supplemental budget to create a new fund. Um, that's, that's the requirement that it be its own fund, and in order to create a new fund, it has to be through a supplemental here. Um, so that's just a heads up, that will be in the next meeting. Um, and franchise fees, um, some of our quarterly revenues came in, so it just makes look, it makes August look like, wow, we're getting a bunch of money, but it's some of these quarterly payments that we get once a quarter. Um, and then our building fund, I wrote down for you with the IGA fees that we submitted to, um, the jurisdictions with which we have an IGA. And for our capital project fund, which is our water system improvement through the geo bond, um, that is still on track and expected to be completed by late this fall.
Wow.
So I'm looking at the fund balance for the gym, the building fund, is it really almost fourteen million dollar?
Mm-hmm.
And we've added on, have we paid everything out of that fund?
What do you mean paid everything?
Well, for our add-on.
Nope, I'm still waiting for the final drawdown on that, so the retention has not been made.
So how, I mean, are we gonna, how much is that gonna be, do you have an idea?
Um, about three hundred thousand. It's not gonna be the big end, if there are any balance.
Okay. Do we go too small?
It's the, actually, we laugh, but yes, we're almost out of space, we are.
I, I, I said that from the beginning, we were too small, too conservative.
Adding to that, so if we did build too small, is there ability to add on at some point?
I don't know, that would have to be more of an architect question, because it would depend on the design of the building and its capacity.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, now for the, my, this is almost my favorite part, it is my favorite. It's the presentation by the, the elementary schools. And so we're gonna start with Sam Boardman, who, uh, is gonna do a small little presentation about their school. Welcome. The mic turns down too.
These are new third graders, so.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure members, my name is Ava Savage.
My name is Julian Rockus. We would like to tell you about some things that are happening at Sam Boardman Elementary. This week we are joining RHS for the Community, Community Spirit Weeks, Monday was Queen King Day. Today was Twon Day. This day is dressing pink, Thursday is school color day. Friday, October fourth is our first team day. This whole day. This whole day geared towards science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. It, it is one of the best days of the whole year. We'll be starting our weekly popcorn day this Thursday. Our PTO popped popcorn for us to buy, and all the money goes towards buying things for the school. One thing that PTO brought was our new school shirts with our new logo, every student and teacher got one. You might have the connection on the council that, um, could get you one too.
Heather Baumgartner's on our PTO.
We are all also excited for our new leader board found funded by the S, uh, EST. Kindergarten has a field trip on October tenth, they're going to the Milton Farms to the pumpkin patch. We would like to invite you to our Veterans Day Assembly on November seventh at ten AM. This year should be one of the best, that's, one of our best ones yet. Thank you for your time.
Nicely done. I just love it, and it helps that I have, um, my wife is the spearhead on that side, so that helps a lot. So we'll do Wendy River, Harper and Fernanda. Yeah, just tilt the mic, better girl.
Good evening, we are students from Wendy River Elementary, my name is Harper.
And my name is Fernanda.
This year is just getting started, but we have already so much we are excited about. We completed our fall already diagnostic and began working on lessons.
Sixth grade is looking forward to going to outdoor school this month. This week, we are celebrating homecoming week by doing jazz updates and door decorating contest by class. We are really excited for the school year and to see WRE's wins, bro.
Uh, you can tell Ms. Scandlin that Sam Boardman was longer than yours.
Present or what?
I'm pretty lucky, uh, as the mayor, I have some good help in the great schools that are being very supportive of doing this program. To be able to get the kids up there, do public speaking, which is gotta be really scary. And, uh, super proud of you two, super proud of you as well. Now, we're having elections, aren't we, so you two may not get to do it, depends, right? But, you know, you did a very good job. So our next one will be for Wendy River, we'll have our student council elections, and we'll have the representatives doing that.
So they might be the incumbents?
They could be coming back, but they, uh, Fernanda was here last year, right? You were what? You came with, you came and talked, didn't you, Fernanda?
The last year was Bell and Judy.
Oh. Gotcha. All right, maybe, are you both ready?
Yeah.
Did you get your form yet?
No.
Okay. It's coming, because Ms. Scandlin just gave it out. Where we going?
No, that comes from their leadership feature.
Mr. Hammond is working on them with that. They, as of right now, they have not been receptive. We'll leave it at that. All right, action items, ordinance six dash twenty twenty four, adopt chapter two point six of the Boardman Municipal Code.
So this was on your agenda last month, and I did it wrong, so Amanda is breaking me out, puts back with an actual, uh, we posted it, done the actual ordinance, all that good stuff. Um, but because you don't have a quorum tonight, or you, you have a quorum, but you don't, you're not all in attendance, we can't achieve it the way we had planned to with a single reading and a single vote. So we amended it, so what was originally posted and what was uploaded earlier today are a little bit different. Um, it just simply says that there'll be two readings, the second reading will be next month, and the effective date rather than being November one will be January one. So. But the proposed language that's behind it hasn't changed.
So we're just doing a first reading?
Yeah, it's just the first reading, yeah.
Do we normally have this game entered in this reading?
I did the second step.
So there's, so that's one and a step two on.
I'm looking for the step one and step two.
It's attached to your agenda.
Huh?
It's attached to your agenda.
So do you need one of us to do it?
Okay, I approved the first reading.
Oh, that's right.
By final only of ordinance number six dash twenty twenty four, an ordinance co-approved amendment to the Boardman Municipal Code, chapter two point one six, planning commission.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? All right, staff member.
Uh, ordinance number six dash two zero two four, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Boardman Municipal Code, chapter two point one six, planning commission.
All right. Thank you. All right, ordinance six dash twenty twenty four, BMC amended text, exhibit A.
That's just the exhibit, that's the attachment to what you just did.
That's the, that's what we agreed to.
Okay. Sounds good. Action items, resolution twenty five dash twenty twenty four, contingency transfer twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five.
Um, some of you may have heard, we had one of the industries in the city, um, discontinue their big construction expansion. And so the contractor asked for the refund of the permit fees, since they had paid all of the fees upfront, um, but did not have any of the work done, um, very minimal. And so this was approved by our, uh, building official, verified that, yep, we needed to refund because they were not continuing with the work, and it was not being rescheduled, it was just being completely stopped. Um, because it was a very large project, uh, the total of the fees was a very large amount that was not included in our original budget. And so I'm asking for this contingency move so that we can refund those fees.
So was it for this project out here?
No, out on Columbia.
So this was, uh, the private road?
This is a primary food processing facility.
Thank you.
You can, Amy.
It doesn't make any difference. I'm moved to approve, so, I'm just, for discussion purpose.
Go ahead, do the motion, and then we'll discuss.
I'm moved to approve resolution twenty five dash twenty twenty four, resolution decrease contingency and to increase twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five expenditures for materials and stuff.
Okay, I got a motion, and I need a second. And then we can discuss.
I'll second.
Okay, now we're in discussion.
Uh, okay.
To do it the right way.
Okay. This is typical business, because I would assume that when somebody's doing a construction, and they're making a contract with a contractor, that, that would, that would have been established, right, like, why is the city having to now refund? When that should have been, in my opinion, that should have, it seems like that would have been part of the contract or the agreement that they would have had.
Um, the agreement the company has with the contractor, we don't get any of that information, so what their agreement was, we don't know. The agreements that we have, when they solicit permits, is with the contractor. So this is the contractor requesting a refund of the fees that they paid for a project that is not gonna go through. It's, it would be the same if somebody came soliciting a building permit to build a new home, and for whatever reason, two weeks later, they come back and they say, I'm not building the home, the city's done no work on it, can I get my refund of the permit fees? And we would refund those as well. So it's a very similar case.
And then the state's reimbursing us what we paid them.
Yes, so the, the permit fees is one fee that we get to keep, and then the state surcharge, which is twelve percent of permit fees, we send to the state, our building official talked with the state, um, about this situation, and the state is going to reimburse us or offset the full one hundred percent of the state surcharge.
Did we do any legwork as far as putting this permit together, or was it, I applied for a permit, we did nothing, and then they came back and said, we're not doing it?
We've done very, very minimal, um, now that we have everything online, the contractor does most of the legwork, yeah.
So you don't feel like, if we gave the money back?
And it's very early process.
As far as like mad hours that we spent dealing with it?
Yeah, it was really. And, and to clarify, this is only, um, all of the permit fees, not the plan review fees. The plan review fees, yes, we did the work, that's not being refunded, and they're not asking for that refund, it's just for the permit fees and the surcharges that go with it.
They al, they also didn't ask for the planning fees back, so.
So it makes, so it makes sense, they're asking for the stuff that we really didn't do.
I have a question, do we have policy language? When that, for, for, for things?
No.
Okay, so maybe we need to be, create a policy language on how we're gonna deal with this, just for the fact that we could technically say, no, we're not giving them back, because it's at the whim of the council. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, we need to have some sort of policy language, I think it should go back, I don't doubt that at all. But we should have policy that dictates what we do.
Maybe a timeframe too, like.
I, I'm just saying, that would make it a whole lot cleaner, because you could have a council that said, sorry, we don't care. You, you paid it, and we're not giving you back, so we could, we need to say that same policy for homeowners and builders that, for anybody who comes in. And maybe it's just, it's, I think it protects us.
I, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
My, my question is, what we're voting on tonight is not about whether or not we give the eighteen thousand two hundred dollars back to this person. We're voting today to change the budget to accommodate the contingency that has resulted of the city giving the money back.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clear about what we're voting. Thought it said eighteen thousand two hundred.
No.
No. Which, uh, so brings me back to the original sort of question that I had, is that if I'm building a house, it would be me paying the fees, but if I contracted with a contractor, they would be asking me for a certain amount before they would proceed. Right, like, I would sign a contract, and they would, they would be charged, so if they did that with this company, agency, whoever, entity, I'm just saying, we are potentially giving them their money for what we know that they paid for, but how do I know that they also didn't get that from the company or agency? Is all I'm saying, so back to what the mayor was saying, I think we, we want to look at or consider in the future having some language in there for that reason.
Yeah, I can, Karen, can you think of a time this has ever happened?
I don't think this has ever happened before, and I don't think it's, it's none of our business. We don't get to, to know what the contract agreements are between the person that buys the permit and the business. I mean, that's none of our business, they just come in and say, I'm gonna build a two hundred square foot place, and we go, okay. And normally, if you're building a house, and you decide, you come in and get the permit, and then you fool around for a year, then you come back in and say, will you extend that permit?
Mm-hmm.
And so that's how you solve a residential, that kind of thing. But this is, this was, these people were really on the fast track, so they were trying to get all their paperwork and stuff done in advance, and so it would look, and I don't know, I guess this, the building department is under the city council's review, but, you know, this, if the, if the, that department thinks they should give this back, we should be agreeing with that.
And it is interesting to know, like, what the building, like, what the code, because, I mean, it's mandated and overseen by the state, like, we're a, a department from the county, I, I mean, it's just not as.
I'm just, my, my concern is, not that I need to know the details of any of the contracts, the concern is just, we're having to change our budget to, to be able to do this refund that's over a hundred thousand, right? That's, and so, and we have the funds.
Oh, correct.
Right?
To us, we're just giving.
But if we were in a situation where it's like, oh, we're gonna have to potentially cut somewhere because we weren't, we weren't expecting this, I'm just saying.
See, I, my, my only issue is, I don't have guidance, and I'm not gonna go with what has been done in the last forty years.
Yeah.
I want, I want to have policy that tells me how to deal with this situation, because that, that's the only thing I'm getting at.
And I wonder if there really is already something, I, I will look.
Can, can we, I mean, we put, I, I get what everybody's saying, can we put it in our permitting process, like, hey, if I'm thinking like a timeframe, or, you know, hey, you can't ask for a refund after a certain point, or you're only gonna get a percentage of it. I think that's typically how some of these contracts actually work, is if you don't do the work, you're still entitled to some money, because maybe you declined a job as a contractor to take this on, and then now all of a sudden it fell through, or they just didn't do it, you've just cost that contractor some money, because maybe they declined future work, now they gotta go back to work and try and find work again, so.
I, I, I'll look up the information on the.
Yes, I.
And so again, they did pay the plan review fees, and they're not requesting a refund for those. They paid, um, the plan review fees, which is our building official reviewing all of their plans. They're not requesting a refund for those, they understand that work was done. They're asking for the refund of the permits for like framing inspections, foundation inspections, inspections that are not gonna happen, the work that we are not gonna do, that's what these fees that we're refunding are for.
Right. I just think it would be really good, since we, if we've never had this happen before, to give us a little guidance on, hey, can we either refund them all? What's the limits, what's not the limits, just so that we have some.
And what if, you know, hypothetically, what if we say no?
Correct. No, I'll look.
No, I mean, like, right now, what if we just said no, like, we're not giving, my, what, what's the recourse?
Okay, all right, I'm gonna need to fill that.
So that, no.
I'll call the question for the vote.
Gotcha.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'll get it.
All right, so we're action item, other business, appoint a parks master plan public advisory committee.
So this is the second of at least five advisory committees that we'll appoint over the next several months. Um, last month you did the transportation system plan, this month we're doing the parks master plan. Um, George and I have been working pretty well together, I think, given everything. Um, we finalized our scope of work, uh, and we're about ready to enter into the actual contract agreement with Shapiro Didway. Um, they will be doing this work, it's about a nine-month project. Um, we're actually targeting the first week of November for both, uh, for two pack meetings, the TSP pack meeting will be on November fourth, and the Parks Master Plan Pack meeting will be on November sixth. Um, so what you've got in front of you is a list of about a dozen folks, I've counted it, but I don't remember.
It's like sixteen.
Fifteen, so I was off by a couple, um. We've tried to get a broad representation, um, two city council members, uh, both, uh, uh, council member Rockwell and council member Salata had indicated an interest in this particular group. We have a Boardman Planning Commission member, um, there are two park district, um, board members. Um, we have two citizens, uh, Taylor Whitman and Crystal Navison, who we reached out to based on their public comment, um, here at different times. Uh, we have a representative for the port, the chamber, uh, the school district, we actually have a student member that we've asked to be appointed, we don't have that name yet, but I would ask you to just, in your, in your motion, just acknowledge that whichever student it is, I, I don't, I don't wanna have to come back if we can figure out how to, how to not do that. Um, both George and I will be there, we have a representative from the, from the public, um, rural county public health, um, who has, uh, some job duties around community health and community, uh, living. Um, and then our Department of Land Conservation Development representative, so happy to answer any questions you may have. Um, but I think George and I are both interested and excited to get the Parks Master Plan going. Um, the city has never had a Parks Master Plan, um, at least one that I have been able to locate, going through the archive room with Amanda. Um, I, so I don't think there's ever been one, the parks was about, it's a li, it's ten years old and not a little more now. Um, and they're in need of one as well, so we're excited about this.
Is there, is there a county master plan for parks?
The county, the, the county does have a Parks Master Plan. Um, its focus is on the three south county, um, Cutsford, Anton Wright, and O H V Park. Um, and then the county has a concept plan for the Heritage Trail that runs through the northern portion of the county, and they have recently just kicked off an effort to convert that concept plan into a master plan.
So would we work in conjunction with, uh, the county and the city, or would this be completely separate and just be a city?
This is a city and district plan, um, so, uh, we have asked for the, um, in the, in the review documents, we've asked them to look at. In the, in the review documents, we've asked them to look at the county's Parks Master Plan as well as. Both the concept plan and then the process they're doing for the master plan for the, for the Heritage Trail. But there's, there's not a lot of cross pollination between, I'm, actually, George is probably the only poll pollinator between the two projects at this point.
Cause I, I think most places, at least the research I did, was uh mostly the counties are usually in charge of the park. That's the only reason why I ask. But there was already data available, something that we could start with.
Yeah, so a lot of the, a lot of the data, they, they, um. It's called like the score for something. It's the state, it's a, it's a statewide data collection that they do and they update the statewide. Plan. It's not a plan so much, it's really just a data collection. And maybe you know what those acronym stands for. Do you remember? Anyway, that's a, that's a regular input into a Parks Master Planning. Effort as well, and that comes out of the state, you see the state um parks. Yeah, yeah, the state, the state parks folks.
And then how often do you anticipate meeting?
I think in the Parks Master Plan, we have eight PAC meetings identified. So over nine months. Now, one of those, they're kind of doing two things on the same day, so it might be seven days for eight meetings. But over the next eight, nine months, for you two gentlemen, um, just be ready for about one a month. Starting early first weekend of November.
Alright, so uh any motion?
Uh, move to appoint the listed individuals asked presented for the Parks Master Plan Public Advisory Committee. With that being said, the representative will be assigned by John and Christie.
I second that, sorry.
Okay, so a motion is second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Missing middle housing fund.
Alright.
Mr. Wildfire. Oh, is it you?
Yeah. He just, he just, he just drove in support. So we are rounding that curve. I cannot remember, we started this in December. This process and we are now settling in on, okay, I I think we have next steps to follow it. From our meeting, from the community meeting. That we had, we walked away with, as a council. Our next step really was connected to the fund. That there was a fund discussed that would be used for economic development, housing, I mean, it just. This fund for economic development. I had a meeting with, with U E C. Who is extremely excited about the process and the fund. And would like to go and partners with the city. So what that means is they would like to. When we have talked about this, we have talked about a million dollars being pulled from the groundbreaking of credit as credit or the. Amazon digs a hole and we get that sum of money. We would take a million of that and put it in this fund. U E C would put a million in this fund. Moral Development would also like to partner with us and put a million in this fund. There would also be eight hundred thousand dollars that is specifically connected to. Taking old manufactured homes.
And replacing them.
And replacing them, and that's eight hundred thousand. So this fund ends up being about, you know, three point eight million, which is. Amazing, and this is boardman. The, the overarching concept would be, uh, U E C would pay a portion of the missing middle fund. The city would pay a portion of the missing middle fund. There would be a a committee. That would oversee the fund. You would have represent, two representatives from the city, two representative from U E C and two representatives from more development. So what I'm asking is that we can agree to move forward with this concept. Now, the details are forthcoming and obviously that would be presented. Hey, this is what we're gonna go. We'd have to select committee members just at the same. Time, not now. General ideas, the thought to move forward. I can't, like, for me personally, it really has been a long haul. I've, there's been a lot of discussion about this. There's been a lot of misinformation about this too. But to me, this is what happens. You get some ideas together, you get. You know, listening sessions and then you settle on something that, that works for the community. This was not a, like. Uh, oh my heck, this is Brandon's idea or anything. It really was this community, let's gather. What do we end up with? I really feel this is. Where we ended up. Extremely excited about this, especially to be partnering with U E C and more development and, and what you can do with um just.
What's super exciting for me is. There are not a lot of cities out there that can do this. And I think we as a city have a tremendous opportunity. Yeah, it's gonna cost us a million dollar. But there's entities that are putting in two point seven million dollars total, you know, and. If we do it right, which we better do it right, make sure we do it right, this could really grow. With the businesses that we have around here, that could really like say. We might just be on the low backburners a little bit and say, I'm gonna wait and see what this whole thing turns out. You know, I I think there's an opportunity to, to do this. I think a million dollars is. A reasonable risk. Cause if we don't like it in a year. We don't have to do any more money. We could just, but I think it's. I think it's a. Wouldn't say a gamble, but I think it would be worth the roll of the dice and give it our best shot with three point some million dollars and see what can we do.
I al- I also think that potentially as word gets out about this, you're gonna get more people involved. I've, I've talked to Brandon a little bit. I I have a little, I wouldn't say I have background, but I have a relative that has considerable background in this. Very specific. Action item or whatever you wanna call it, and uh they, they actually went through the Catholic Church in Washington and got them involved. They, you know, they used the USDA at that point too. I mean, there was other entities involved, but the point was just like, once word got out, like it was. It was kind of a big deal and they did some cool things up in Washington. So. And I'm getting more information, like I've been in touch with the people that my relative used to work with on uh, on this very specific thing and um. And so just gathering more information about it. So I'm excited about it. I mean, if we're gonna invest in more than, why not? I mean, that's what we're here to do, in my opinion.
And yes, I I saw, yes, I really do agree with that too.
Go ahead.
I think with um. This, if we could create more housing, this would be a really positive thing for our top ten taxpayers. In our county. That, you know, all of them would like to have their employees live because. They always say, for every mile they're driving to work, they're thinking about looking for a new job. Yeah, I mean, you got all that time, window time, and you're thinking, you know, so and so was mean to me yesterday. I'm gonna go look. You know, and they start looking and then you've got all that investment that you've put into them. So I think that uh. This is a. A good investment. And I think this particular partnership. U E C has a lot of connections that we don't have. And people that are out on the ground promoting things. Yeah, I'm, I I would think this is a good news for us. You believe I said that?
I am. But I'm glad. And that means you've grown since you became a counselor.
No, no.
Oh boy.
Do not look at compliments the wrong direction.
No, no, here's, here's the thing. You just will learn right here and now.
Oh, you tell me.
You can never believe anything I say. By. If I mean it. I say things I think people need to hear. I don't, I don't, you don't, you don't have no idea how I would vote. Because I always play that.
Both sides.
Both sides, I would.
Not gonna say I do, but I have a pretty good idea.
I'll bet you don't.
Moving right along. Anybody else? Ethan?
Yeah, so my only question, nor less, so these top ten tax paying businesses that are eating houses for their employees. Have they been asked to join into this? Like what money for, what something for?
In, in that meeting, it really was pretty clear.
In February, the initial meeting.
Yeah, you walked away and it was like, nah, those businesses need to get on board. And, and this process will be that catalyst. I mean. So, yes, we will.
There was a lot of, sorry.
Some of those businesses have already gotten on board for just fifteen houses. Contracted with property manager and started their own, their own gate. And others are like, yeah, we need it and we're willing. And there's two or three people that are talking all the time about how many things happen. They're looking around, boardman and arrogance and land that they can start and build and buy them. Correct, yes, there's.
So they're already, they're already in that world.
And it, and it wasn't just businesses. I mean, our school district is, in my opinion, very, very desperate. To get affordable housing here because that is their number one reason why they can't keep. Teacher, well.
And the county is.
One of the top reasons why, and count, keeping good teachers here. If that's a big deal and when they can't afford to live here and they can only rent. That gets old real quick and they move on.
And some of those businesses are, are participating in other ways too. So I think it's. In, in, they're, they're all gonna be able to come to the table with what they can come with, I think.
But, and I think what you're going, it's not like, hey, we're gonna do this and I know you haven't done anything, but we're still gonna. Like, no, you're gonna put some skin in the game. I think that's.
So I had a question, Brenna. Um, so I get that we would be creating a fund. And we, we would, the next process would be done to create the, the committees or the. You know, how this is going to be used. However, the eight hundred thousand for the mobile home replacements. Is that U E C just handing that over as well for then us to do? Because I thought it was tied to grants that are very specific. And then our, if we have it in our fund. Is that still, we're gonna have to follow there? You see what I'm saying?
That would be great. And again, uh. Mr. Wildfire has been um tasked. With the obligation to create this program and process very directly.
So part of that eight hundred thousand is the demolition costs to get rid of the old trailer. So it is only for that. And then U E C will help to. Figure out the funding for the new trailer.
It's, I have no idea what the, I just know.
But they approached, they approached us a few years ago.
I will say that programs like this. Do exist. They're not very well heard of. Like, I, I will use my own personal experience. My grandparents, when they moved here from uh Mexico. They had their, they had their house that they have their family in, and then same kind of system or whatever. They came in, replaced the home. And then they had a new home. Now, the whole process involved with that, I don't know, but I just know that actually happened and this is back in the early nineteen nineties when this happened, so.
And this question might be more for, for Marta.
I think they.
But I would wonder if it would have to be in a separate account. For.
Yeah, the easy way to deal with it is if there's a lot of strings with a. Particular pot of dollars, you just keep them separate. They can co-invest in similar projects, right? But this one has certain set of rules and this one has a certain set of rules.
Okay.
So they can always come together on a project, but. Usually if there's a lot of rules associated, one pot of money, just keep them separate.
Well, and I don't think any of the businesses that we mentioned here would want to change their. They're wanna do just what they can do, not.
So do we have a consensus that there's something we wanna continue to go forward with?
So this fund. This is gonna be for investors, basically, them and, and the companies. Come and build houses and stuff like that, right? Not. Hey, I wanna low interest loan from the city to go building that house.
Well, it could, they can draw it.
Sure, th- there's a lot of different ways you can do it, and part of what you would be, I think, proving today is like basically the figuring out of that, right? So you're gonna have different goals for your fund than Newburgh or Kuzbe. And collectively, you would determine what those goals and parameters are. Most of these funds are typically for builders. They're for development. They're for doing a bunch of housing at once. Sometimes they're to advance just a different way of doing it. So maybe you have a pilot project. They're typically not. For like one by one by one homeowner loans like that, if that's to your question.
And I think the idea behind it is to try and keep the costs down so that they become more affordable.
Yeah, correct.
That is the, the purpose.
And to entice developers, sometimes you entice developers, although we did it years ago and it didn't do anything, but gap financing can sometimes.
Sweat equity was another one. Sweat equity was a big one.
Lots of, lots of, of that.
Do we have a consensus? So it looks like we have a consensus moving forward.
Cool. Worth the drive.
Always worth the drive to see all of it.
That is the best answer.
Alright, so we'll move down to the next part. Keep Boardman clean.
Okay. How many months we've had this brought up, but here we go. So, so this is the garbage voucher. In the past, it has, it has moved from, correct me if I'm wrong. Two times a year, or has it always been three for?
I think it's only been two.
One or two.
Now, and I think recently it's three.
And then it moved to three. And then it went a discussion of six. It never happened because. Then the garbage range went up. So just to get a recap. There has been discussions of, okay, do we, do we look outside a little differently? There's talk about, hey, I don't have a truck. How do I even get it there? What if, what if we were to have streets where the city employees go, you bring it to the curb, the city will come pick it up. We'll designate the time, this is when you can do it. We'll help you get rid of your trash. Another thought was to have a dumpster placed in certain locations. From what I gather, if we place a dumpster, it must be manned, or you get a boat in placed inside it. So there are just.
Cause we do unman dumpsters all the time at the park. And they get filled up very quickly.
So anyway, the, the concept now is, those are some thoughts. That, that I have heard, and, and it really is, where do you guys wanna settle? Do we, do we wanna keep just doing the vouchers? Do you wanna look at? Other ways? I know you guys talked about, there's some apartments that, well, they don't get the vouchers because they're not the homeowner. There's been other aspects. So it really is.
That's what I was gonna say.
So this is the time to talk.
Do a hybrid type thing. I mean. After the discussion we had uh last council meeting, maybe we need to think about. Are there other ways to be able to keep Boardman clean instead of? I don't want to come out and across that. We don't need to spend money. Uh, uh, that's, I don't want that. Do we need to be? Responsible with it? Absolutely. But we, our number one goal is, how do we keep Boardman clean? When Boardman's, there's people in Boardman's who don't wanna keep it clean. So and I think maybe we have to spend a little bit more money to be able to think about keeping those. And I was, I don't have the answer, but I think there's a lot of people in our city hall and up here that might be able to have an idea of what would be a good. Keep voucher program. But what else could we do that might be outside the box, thinking for our community and our citizens?
I lo- I like that hybrid approach where maybe we consider doing, instead of doing as many months of the, the voucher program, we have one. One time where we have a city come with a trailer or something. Because uh obviously leaving a dumpster out there is terrible, probably a terrible idea, but. Having a city employee like, hey, we're gonna let you bring your stuff here, we will help you because. I think what we talked about with senior citizens, maybe not having the opportunity to take garbage out or. Apartment owners or, or maybe you just don't have a, you don't have a vehicle, you know, and so um, I think. And so, um, I think that's a good idea too, and if, like, we talked about investing in our town. Investing in keeping it clean, I think is important too, so.
So, the only thing I see today. Saying, hey, we're gonna go put it on your street, we'll come back and pick it up. Is now people are gonna start throwing stuff out on the street. Weeks, months in advance, because we're collecting a pile for the city to pick up. Making our town look like crap for three months, whatever.
Well, I I think if we can keep it. I think if we can maybe keep it at a timeframe, we just say, hey, we're only gonna allow it at this time. You know, because any other time, the, the, you know, the sanitary disposal or whatever, they're in charge of that. And they're not gonna pick it up, or if they do pick it up, they're gonna charge them. So, um, so I think if we're just clear, maybe with our guidance on that, maybe, maybe, I don't know, I get that too.
I was thinking with the recent, um. Out of announcement, uh, um, the city is gonna be enforcing more ordinances, right? Which includes if you're not keeping things clean, um, that maybe. Just for this round, right, it could be that they get an additional voucher. As a warning, right, like you, you need to get this. Um, we could also consider doing something like that. For the, for the individuals that you're like, I'm gonna, we're gonna cite you. If this doesn't get rectified, that you get it like an additional voucher.
Okay, and it probably should include undeveloped pieces of property. Yeah, I mean, especially, you know, obviously in city, I mean, I think about like when we did the citywide cleanup and how often we have cleaned that property for. Another owner that has never came out there and done anything with it, so. That's another thought too.
One question I got, so say we want six months or six, yeah, six times a year. Does our budget handle forty-eight thousand dollars?
No. Yeah.
But we have money.
You would have, you would have to transfer money from the general fund because your garbage funds would not have enough. Um, our garbage fund is strictly the fees that we charge for garbage. And this last rate increase that we did for garbage was because sanitary disposal increased their fees. Right, and we have to pay them the new rates. Um, but this is not taken into account, offering the garbage vouchers six times. Because out of the current garbage rates that our citizens pay is where we pay for the vouchers. So. Where everybody wants to keep their garbage rates down, how can you increase the number of times you offer the vouchers? Um, I remember off the top of my head, but I think we went to about sixteen thousand dollars. Um, with the vouchers, the last round, it was something like that, yeah, so you do that times six. Um, you're gonna, well, you say six. But whatever you do it to, you know, I mean, that's why we haven't pushed doing the vouchers here recently. Um, cause it's different things to to analyze. So who's gonna pay for it? Cause our general fund fees come from, you know, various sources. So now you're gonna be reducing those other revenues. Or other potential projects to keep paying for garbage fees. Because we don't wanna raise the garbage fees, but that's what we're spending the money on, so.
Could we charge? Could we make it available, so like say, we're, just as an example, you know, the, 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 um. Sidewalk pickup or whatever, whatever you wanna call it, we decide, okay, we're gonna make this available. But we're only gonna charge a fraction of what it would take to take it to the dump yourself, whether it's ten, twenty dollars or whatever, and we charge, say, five. To make up for the fact that we're going to take this out, or, I mean, I'm just throwing ideas out there.
Um, like you would charge the.
You would charge them to do the extra. So maybe there's people that, yeah, they they can't get the garbage voucher because they live in assisted living or an apartment complex or whatever. But we're gonna say, okay, um, we'll charge you five dollars a flat rate. You come and put your stuff out here, we will come and pick it up, or somebody will come and pick it up to help offset some of those costs.
I think it could get messy, is my only concern, because, um, like you were saying, like. If I live in an apartment and I start to make my little pile. But then maybe leads into my neighbors who, when you're in an apartment, like you could have somebody on top and on next, I'm like, whose is it? Right, like, and then it's just everywhere, and then you're, you're at risk of exposing your employees. Cause you don't know necessarily.
And with apartment complexes, that there's. Are they gonna pile it outside their door, or one doesn't get air in the parking lot before you charge it?
Well, I think you could specify that, that's all I'm saying.
Three flights upstairs to go get.
Well, I don't think that we would probably have them go and pick it up, so that there would be a general location is what I'm saying.
And and I, and I have seen, I ha- I I do know that there are cities that do this. So I know that there probably is, you know, a process for how they do it. And I, and and for safety, I'm just saying that you're also exposing your employees then for potential risks. For potential hazards that they are, you know.
Yeah, and tip- yeah, typically what I found when I was looking into this, most cities do what Hermiston does. And it's, hey, we have one dump day, and as soon as the garbage things are full, it's over. And we pull them away, and it typically is one day.
I don't want that, but that's.
Oh, correct, correct.
Um, I was thinking, I really kind of have been thinking of what Christina said is, if we were to. Keep three days or three months. And to use our code enforcement to go around and, hey. And the, and do properties, you know, locations and said, you got, lose your voucher, you got a month to get it cleaned. Here you go, and then we're not giving to everybody, but we're targeting specific locations in our community. So the people will say, hey, we're gonna keep this clean. And not every tongue in there can do it, but we as the city get to dictate. And then when the code enforcement wants or chooses to be strict. Or, we can just say, oh, by the way, here you go. And that's not, the stain's not so bad. Oh, here's, your rose bushes are too high on the corner of the street. Oh, by the way, here's your, your things, take care, this is in our right of life, so it's too high.
And would you, so would you stick to the, like, the vouch, like, having go to the voucher? And then necessarily not doing a, like, a drop side or anything?
And you give them a free voucher for one, one, all, one truckload.
Correct, yes.
Or maybe, maybe it's, it's really bad and we gotta do three truckloads. Cause the whole purpose of it is, is to keep the community cleaner.
Correct, correct.
The the potential downfall of that is, and I'll bring up, ergon. And just listening to the complaints there is like, we will probably run into some people that are just, they're gonna flat out refuse. It's my property, I can do whatever I want with it, blah, 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 and then they're gonna complain and, you know, and that's what I've seen. In in recent months is, is, I'm not doing it, you can't make me do it, you know, and.
They get a bill.
So. Because for the longest time, from the county side of it, in my opinion. There really wasn't any code enforcement, we just kinda let people do whatever. Now, we've had these ordinances in place or codes or whatever forever, that just didn't really get enforced. Now we're enforcing, and that's where the, the.
They've been enforced for quite a while.
Well, depending on where, I I'll only, I'll use an example. The the property that we talked about off of six, the city park, that the person doesn't live here. We were taking care of it for them at some point, and then we just, we did, we don't do it anymore. They don't have anybody here to do it. So now it's being enforced, whereas before it wasn't really, it wasn't really getting enforced, because that's just not what we did.
And that, yeah, that's it.
And that's just an example.
Right, so I mean, if you're, I mean, and I can definitely go look, as a staff, we can get some ideas, I can work with Marta to say, okay, budget wise. This is where we could lie and look at different things, so we can take something back.
So personally, I'd like to get something figured out, nice, so we can get a voucher. Go down there, she's been a few months now, that we're just sitting here talking about, we're gonna get more information. Not wait, not end of the day, but.
No, what was the last time, when did we end up?
May, I think, May, I think was the last.
We did not.
It was May?
I think it was April, May, yeah.
April, May, we did two months, and I think that was the last time.
Okay.
I was there every weekend.
Do we wanna do October, November, or do we wanna do October, or I just don't know how long it'll take.
Well, I think the way the weather's looking, November might not be a good idea, just I think we're gonna get early snow. And I know he's gonna do anything.
I I just wanna get one done before winter.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, like.
Yes, me too.
So.
The more, yeah, the more you extend it, the more we as humans procrastinate, ah, I've got two more weekends to go, I got another weekend. I think if you.
So the deadline for the paper, like, North Memorial Times paper. Um, they usually send out the, like, right at the first of the month. So, this one is going out. So the next one that we'd be able to get it into North Memorial Times would be in the November issue.
So we need to do before, so, but we wanna do something in October, that's what you're saying?
Think the week before, the week before Halloween is probably a good idea.
Tony would know a lot about this conversation. Yeah, and, yeah, I think it would just be about advertising. Just getting the word out, that, hey, the vouchers are now available and and they'll be through, but we can set the dates, we can have it go through. Second week in November or so.
And maybe state that there won't be another one available again until a certain time, so maybe that'll.
After winter, so.
Yeah.
Now, the only other thing I have to ask or think about is down there. When you show them your voucher, show your ID and you actually live in the city. No, they don't.
No, they don't make you show your ID, you just, they just look at the voucher.
So, yeah, because the city's paying for it, we're not paying for the county residents to go dump because they have a buddy that has a voucher.
I mean, they, the.
When Tony gives you a voucher, she asks you for your address and she checks it with your.
I'm not saying, Tony.
Saying that somebody might give it to another person that doesn't live in the city.
I have a buddy that lives in the county, and hey, we need to get rid of crap.
Can I use your voucher?
Right. Yeah.
That's actually no time limit, so like, maybe, or.
Which we, I don't know if we'd be able to do that now, like, for this short time, cause we'd have to work with sanitation, but we certainly could look at. Hey, we, we also want you to ID.
Yeah, do it county stack. Yeah, transfer station.
But just, just for now, we can say, hey, we're gonna go through, today's October first, we're gonna go into a voucher from. Whatever until November, second week in November or something.
Alright, so I move that we, uh, do a voucher, a one-month voucher. We need to get this going.
As as soon as.
You know, we could do a motion. Could we agree to the three times a year? And then continue to have a discussion about the other things, cause I think what we broke down was on like two months. Or the versus one month, versus, versus, you know, additional things, so if we just, I don't know.
I just wanna get one month, because I think we could agree on one month.
And then move forward.
Three times a year, it was just a breakdown of the two months. Every, every, you know.
Every time.
Or do we have one thing? So.
Okay, but we, I mean, but for right now, we're gonna do October.
Good, and we don't need a motion to that, right?
I I think it's just a consensus.
I mean, we have all have a consensus for one month, I think we can get it one month.
Good?
Okay.
October, okay, we'll get that out.
Alright, we're in the public comment session, section. So Mr. Schremer, public commentary is. Going, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, anyone may speak on a topic, uh, may speak on any topic other than a matter of litigation before the judicial land use. Matter or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, Mr. Schremer, this floor is yours.
Okay, I just wanted, um, give some updates from the Park and Rec standard, and I, I wanna tell you how well, uh. How well we work together with the city workers, the staff's been awesome to work with, and we appreciate it. After our meeting that we have for the work session on the Tower Unzi Road section. We came out with the three things, the zoning, the D E Q, doing testing, uh, and then the funding. Um, and we did have a meeting the following Friday with the county for how to rezone and such. And so that is in process, uh, D E Q came the following Monday and they did testing. Uh, both different sites within that area, um, and we're waiting for the results from them on that. Uh, and then funding is the the biggest one, and we're working on that with developing with companies on that. So, uh, the master plan, working with Carla and Shapiro's, uh. This is, we had a master plan, um, and in there, there's always, there's a list of things that. Every year, what the goals were, uh, when, when Ted was here. He pretty much got everything done on his list, um. And he did surveys, just like you were talking earlier about surveys, he he did surveys as well, met with the community, uh. And went through his questions that he had, and I guess, I I think they're great questions to be asking our community as well. Um, on what, same type of thing, what we want to see in the parks. Um, and Shapiro with their companies that they're tied in with, they're having same type of thing. Uh, in this tenure plan, uh, master plan, I should say, not ten, necessarily tenure, I'm really looking beyond. Uh, I think, uh, I, that that's one of the things I, I think our community needs to understand, we've got to look beyond the ten years. We have to look at fifty years, and I've said this, I I think we think too small. In lots of cases, and you just talked about it earlier about a building that probably thought too small. Uh, I think the one person that in the community that has thought big and has made it happen is the fire department. I think that building is is thought well, or well advanced, and I'm, and I from, I. I say that cold hardly about Mike, that he did a great job of promoting and getting a big building to make things to be for long term. And I think that's where, for me, that's what I want, and that's what I wish, we gotta look beyond. Right now, beyond seven years, beyond ten, you gotta be looking, what's gonna serve, uh, our community the best. So that's where I'm looking at, I I know for myself, um, I have my own list of. Things that I've come up with, that is ten years of activities to do. And there are plenty of what I think needs to happen, and then we have gone through, so I've got two and a half pages. Of ideas, and they're broken down by years and such, that we will see happen. In my lifetime, as as the CEO of Park and Rec District, as long as the board wants to keep going in that direction. The other point is our, our city property, uh, working with Brandon, uh, the city park property that we've taken care of. We felt like, um. It was best for us to step back out of that contract with the city. And let the city take care of the city property and the, um, park and. The district takes care of the district property, so after this season's over and we go to blow out. That'll be the end of the contract that we have with each other, and so the city's gonna pick up doing some more work. With their, uh, city workers, and we will, it it's gonna cost us employees, I know that. Um, but then we won't be working out, we'll be focusing on our property. And I think that's it, right now, that's the route where we're gonna go with that, um. Ted also had put in an application to do a fifty-year lease on the, on the property down there. Uh, and I I know Karen, I've talked about this before, we want to be able to lease the property and not own the property. Unless we knew we were going to profit. Unless we knew we were going to profit. The problem is, if we don't own the property. And we go through the process of trying to own all that property from the core. The first drive of refusal goes to tribal. And I already know that the, they have plans for down there. They will take over a section between our east end. And the west end of the ports property. They will be taking that over within the next three years. They already have plans. And I don't know what it is, but I know they're gonna take that. And if we went to go to, and our, our lease runs out next year. And so talking with our, uh, Corps of Engineers. Uh, we are going to end up. We have to follow the, the application that Ted put in is done. They cannot go any further because. Of the mandates, congressional mandates in ninety-six, which says that at the end of the lease, the property will be turned over to the city. And then in two thousand and seven, that was changed to the district. So at the end of the lease. We are supposed to go through the process to purchase or, you know, get that, obtain that property. Okay, and there's, it's a whole process. We go through application, the fees and all that, that you have to go through with federal government. So. And like I said, if we try that, and I'm almost positive, we try to, tribal will take our, that, that property down there. So our, our option at this, this point is really, is going to be. To try to reverse the mandate, which is gonna go through Congress to go through that process, which we know that's not gonna be easy, but. That is gonna be our best option if we decide to try to take, to obtain the property. And the only way we're gonna be able to get the property is to work with tribal. Which we've already started doing some things with tribal police. Uh, we want to, uh, build both. Uh, storage units down there, and that would be the fire department, county sheriff's office, and tribal police would have both storied in our, in those things. Uh, we've talked about trying to do a powwow here, uh, down at the Davis Park. Um, and we, we think we could do that. So if we can build and collaborate with them, which that's one of the things I love doing, is working with other. Companies and people and collaborating, doing something, I think we can make that possibly. That we can have that land maintained from the federal government and still not worry about tribal coming and taking it over. So. Aside from that, there's some information that is fresh off my seat that I just wanted to share with you. I think you're the, you, you guys need to understand what we're facing, um. You know, it's ironic that there, the zoning rules do not apply down there at this point. Uh, because it's federal land, I, I'm assuming, but. There's, there's, even Carla and I have talked about this, there are no zoning rules down there yet. Uh, and I know she, yeah, is the word, right?
There, zoning applies because you're, you're, you're not, you are not a federal agency, but the way it is currently designated on the zoning map is problematic.
Yeah.
So, so when you say. Take land, are you saying all of the property or a portion of the property?
No, but, okay, so B I A, pretty much their line comes right up through here. So where you guys built, um, the water storage unit down there. Uh, that is. At, at Summer Beach, yeah, that is right on that border, and I couldn't tell you which side it's on, but I know. A couple of our holes that we have for the disc hall is on that property over there. Okay, um, but the land that we lease is basically from here all the way down. Okay, and we would, if we're gonna, that would be all ours. That's what, that's the part that's set apart for us. At this point.
So when you, I, I guess what I'm saying is when you're talking about the tribal land that they could potentially take, what portion is that?
It, it.
Where the trees are, right?
Yeah, it's from this to here.
Okay.
That, I just. North side of the road.
Okay.
And I know, uh, I know there's plans, there was, there's recreational plans for this area that. If they, and, but they're going to do something. I don't know what it is.
So you're not saying you're gonna lose the park?
Not yet.
They could technically come and say, we're not, we're just gonna.
Yeah, they could say that, no, that part, that's undeveloped. This is, but this, they could take all this property. Definitely, okay.
That's, I guess that's what I'm getting at, when you, when you say take.
And if they take it, then we just take everything out of it, right? You don't really, it's, it's not gonna leave it.
I don't know how that works. I mean, you're just gonna vomit.
They come every year and inventory, they, the Corps of Engineers knows where every sprinkler and hydrant should be. And you better have a hydrant there. If you've dug up a hole and moved it, you better have warned them that you were moving that. This is, this is, we're at the mercy. Of the Corps. And now, before I left, and see, you probably know something new be- before I left. And with the city's new, our new agreement for the water building and stuff. The Corps says, we'll do the paperwork because we know how to do the paperwork, but the, it's the tribe's responsibility. So the tribe, we're eventually going to have to work with the tribes. The Corps wants to get out of this. Well, they have, when we open, we made the mistake opening up the can of worms. Was when we were trying to see if we couldn't get the property.
Gotcha.
And so, and, you know, the Corps, regardless of what you think about them. And how fast they move and stuff. At least you have somebody. That's easier to, you know, they've got lots of practice at this. And.
Maybe start, start, relook and build a new park. If we're gonna lose it, we don't need to invest in there anymore.
But where are you gonna move the water?
Well.
Where are you gonna move water from?
I, I, I get that. If you're gonna lose it, why, why invest in it? I mean, I mean, that's where.
And the Corps owns all the land.
I mean, that goes, so.
No, they don't.
No, that's not true.
No, they don't.
I've looked at other properties that I'm going, hmm, might could be a possibility.
Huh, okay.
I hope they do, because the.
All right, well, good luck with this.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, it's been a while since we've heard from, uh. Chief Stokoe.
I get to talk?
Yes, you get to talk. Yeah, we're, we're not gonna, we should probably just skip all over it, yeah.
Was quite a lot.
No, go ahead. It's your, your turn.
We should have a, uh, month in report. Uh, we haven't really been able to talk about numbers for the last several months, but as you can see. Um, our, our numbers are increasing. We're, we're staying at that, around that five hundred calls for service a month. Um, if we stay on that trajectory through the end of the year, we're gonna be well over eleven hundred cases more than we took in twenty twenty-two. Um, that's a pretty substantial increase. So we are seeing an increase in calls for service. Um, we, um. Are having some, we, we, we are losing an officer tomorrow to Hermiston P D. Um, so we've accepted her resignation effective tomorrow. Um, I'm hoping that, uh, we can find ways to potentially do some part-time staffing with, uh, some other officers that used to work here. Um, because we also have an, an officer out on medical right now and, uh, one on leave, so, uh, we're, we're hurting. We're trying to make sure we have that twenty-four hour coverage. We are getting it, but it comes at a cost. So, uh, aside from that, are there any questions?
It's, uh, it's alarming to me of the continued increase of our incidents.
What I would tell you is, is, anytime you experience growth, your calls for service are gonna go up.
Right.
I mean, it just, it, it, it is what it is. Not, not all those are bad calls, but they are calls. And they're a use of our services, our resources. Uh, I can tell you that the fire, uh, ambulances experience the same thing. Uh, it's a call for service because we have growth.
Right.
And I'm not saying it's bad. I'm just saying it's, it's a struggle. And right now is really tough to try to hire, uh, police officers. Uh, it, it's a, it's a nationwide shortage. It's, it's tough to fill those positions and, and, and my desire, we've had a lot of luck over the years growing our own. And, and hiring, uh, locals who are vested in our community, and that's. That is a desire I continue to try to achieve, but that's not always gonna be the case and, and, uh. Uh, we're gonna start working with the schools to, uh, uh, we used to teach criminal justice class, which really got some of our. Our young kids interested in law enforcement, and we don't do that now. Um, partially because our teacher that could teach that class. No longer is here, so he kind of let those young folks down. Yes.
That, that could do part-time.
But. He could not.
Donations, donations.
I try.
Do you know this person?
So, uh, we have had talks, I've had talks with the superintendent and trying to figure out how we can potentially get somebody. The, the problem is, uh, uh, in order to give that credit, you have to be a teacher in, and I, I can't send my officers to. To college to become teachers when we're trying to expect them to be cops, so it just doesn't work. So anyway, we're gonna continue to, to work on, on, on those issues and, and, uh. We'll continue to provide you twenty-four seven coverage like we have been.
All right, so I know it doesn't fix the problem right away, but getting entry-level police officers, is that an issue nationwide as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we've had a position posted for almost nine, nine months.
For entry level?
For entry level. We finally got four applicants.
You turned me down.
Well, again, there's, there's certain criteria and standards that we have, so.
Yeah, but he could be the teacher and then he just.
Keep saying no, I, I wasn't gonna help you. I'm saying no, that's why I helped the fire department.
You know, thinking about it.
Another call for service.
Top security there, chief.
I, it, it would be, it, it, I, I, I know you guys do it and we appreciate the support, but, um, when you see those guys out there, um, you know, it. They're putting in a lot of hours. Brandon can attest that our overtime is atrocious. So when you're stepping up, but we can't always expect them to cover all those shifts. I mean, we gotta have a life too, so. Um, I appreciate what they do. They work hard and, and they are committed to our community. Yeah, get an opportunity and thank them, please do.
All right, anybody got any comments? All right, everybody sees the building report, the building department report? Anybody got comments or questions about that?
Like permits are going back up again?
And Glenn was.
We have seen enough taken housing, uh, over the last, over the last two months, we've probably moved. Twenty-five to thirty houses through the planning side, which means they're, they've all landed on the building side now, so. We have, and that's the house side. That's not the, the commercial industrial side, but we hadn't seen any houses come through for several months.
Is that the PM range?
It's both River Ridge and homemade, uh, both have, um. Probably fif- I, don't quote me on this, fifteen plus at homemade and probably. Eight to twelve at River Ridge and then next space.
What about?
Sorry. I was just gonna ask, is there any way to get more than just three months on here? And could we get the last twelve months, like a rotating?
So rolling twelve months.
A rolling twelve month? Because.
They're all there.
For the building.
Well, this is the budget year that they give us now. I, I know, but when we were looking at the previous year, you could see the big comparison. Of where the houses are being built and where the.
What the impacts are.
Where the impacts are, yeah.
When can we anticipate, um, I don't know if it's still going through, but, uh. Next to Driftwood R V, isn't that where they're supposed?
Yes, yes. Um, I haven't talked to the developer in a, in several weeks. I know they were trying to get pipe in the ground this fall. I don't know if they achieved that. Um, they were working through some financing issues. Uh, your earlier conversation will be very beneficial to a number of projects. Um. So I don't, I don't have a good answer for that, but I, I can inquire and, and try to, what I did put in my planning update this time is kind of those project items. And I can try to add those later for projects that have been approved, not things that are pending.
Are, are we also concerned? My understanding is when they first talked about developing that park out there, they were gonna sell the lots and now they're not, is what I was.
So, so you can't sell the lots. If it's a park, you can't sell the lots.
Originally, when they, in my understanding, when they first, they said that they were selling the lots and then they came back.
Yeah.
About three months ago and said, oh, no, we're not doing that.
Yeah, if, if you were hearing that in the community, I don't know if they were misinforming or if there was some other misinformation out there, but it was approved as a park. And when it is a park, you, you.
Can't sell.
Right. You can, you can own the home, or you can lease the home from, 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 from a third party or from the park. Um, but the space, it will be a space rent or space lease, yep.
Hey. Moving on. Playing part.
He skipped over roll from Public Works, but that's okay.
He wasn't able to get on.
Hey, Public Works, because I was looking at it. That's why I skipped it. Public Works.
He wasn't able to get on, so.
Thank you. I got a question about Public Works, which. May, maybe this is the, not the, the, the right time, but Columbia Avenue.
It's not the right.
No, okay, so I can bring, uh, can I bring it up later?
I would say.
I, I have a vested interest in Columbia Avenue.
Uh, yep, so you got an updated schedule? The plan is to have it, they're starting paving, they're starting to subgrade October.
I, I am willing, maybe this is illegal, I'm willing to bet that that doesn't happen.
So, but that is the latest schedule that, that was hand-delivered over in that area.
Yeah, so pizza, Brandon.
I can't, I couldn't find that on our website either.
It just got updated, I think, I, I saw it the other day.
I know what day it got, and I couldn't find it, so. It's somewhere where.
So on the main page, down in the bottom right, there is the, um, project improvement projects button. You click on that. On the right side, there's a scrolling menu that shows all projects that are happening. So there is a Northwest Commute, or Northwest Columbia Ave, I think it's Columbia Ave Northwest, so it's all in alphabetical. When you click on that, there's gonna be status updates and then there's files. So under the files is where that updated schedule is.
Okay.
I'm looking. Anyone in on this pizza bit?
I'm pleading with it.
I think everybody on that street would be in.
There's three of us, right there. He, he got the worst of that.
The mayor's little thing here.
Yeah, he got the worst of that whole deal.
Had a hole in front of my street, in front of my house for four months.
That was done on purpose. Oh, where's the mayor live? All right, let's get his spot.
I just kept looking.
So I, I provided a bit report. I'm here, I, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you might have, or if you wanted to, if you thought into any of the particular topics, I kind of had a lot. Um, Council Rockwell, I'll try to add projects next time, like. Projects that are more in a planning process, development things. I didn't do that this time. I'll try to add that. Um, given that this is kind of a new function, I'm, I'm learning here, so, um, I appreciate your input. Um, I'll, I'll try to keep you updated again on the kind of the strategic planning pieces. Um, that are happening. Um, again, there's some stuff in here about kind of some of the smaller pieces. And then I will add the development projects. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or attempt to, otherwise.
Thank you.
I like it.
Well, it's good.
Well, you know, I used to teach.
It's it's like reading a textbook, I I, you know, it's. It's not at the sixth grade level, like the newspaper.
Well, I could tell you a story about that, okay.
Yep, uh, and I was just looking, there's gonna be a bunch of committee reports. That you guys are gonna be able to share here shortly, all the committees you're gonna be on.
He's already on the parks.
The garbage voucher one.
Uh, we had an open house September twenty fourth, there was. Almost a dozen people here, um, I did have a conversation with North Memorial Times and what we're gonna do. Um, because when we finally met as a council and where the paper. Fell out, we were not able to post anything in the paper about the expansion, the building. So, uh, the North Memorial Times is gonna come, take some pictures, gonna do a write-up. And in the write-up, I'm gonna open it up, say, hey, if you'd like to come by, please come by and look at the thing and I will show you around. So that will give additional people an opportunity to come see the expansion. So. Uh, Amanda has gone to, went to a training and, um, in that training. Was the.
It's my water bottle, I was trying to.
In the training, they talked about records retention and we would like to really. Take the opportunity to truly organize, we have an online version that is now approved, we wanna be able to take. Documents, put it online or, um. Electronic, thank you, electronic. In order to do this, what most cities do is they will close for the week. And obviously PD goes and they're, you know, but like the city staff, the doors are closed, we're, everyone's all in to do records. I am asking that we do November fourteenth and fifteenth, it's a Thursday and a Friday. Uh, we didn't want to get too close to Thanksgiving because people would be taking it off anyway, we don't wanna do that. PD would still function as normal, um, so the doors would allow people to go see PD, but the. The city hall side would be closed, we wouldn't be answering phones. It would give us two days to truly go through and just organize, there were several attempts over the years and they really have, it's. Good, we just wanna finish it, some would start, then another person would hire and they would kind of have a different look on it and it would. File system would be just a little bit different, so we just wanna be.
Who's the most OCD? This would be a good project for them, I I know who it is.
So, so that I'm asking if that it would be okay if we do that, again, it's Thursday, Friday.
So what what do you intend to do with the? With the records that are in the archive room? Are you thinking you're gonna take those boxes and then try to scan them into? The the scanning and you're not gonna do that that day, you're just gonna organize boxes?
Amanda?
So the purpose of what we're doing is we're trying to get a handle on what we have currently, because there's so much in there. Um, following the Secretary of State's retention schedule, we will maintain what needs to be maintained. And then if there are anything that needs to be maintained over a hundred years is a permanent record, we have to keep a hard copy of. Anything less than that, we do not have to keep a hard copy of because we now have. A compliant online management system, electronic records. So what we're going to do is we're going to go through our records, determine what needs to be kept. What needs to be scanned and then we will start the process, but because there has been so much. Turnover in different filing types, there is no filing system currently. It's just find a spot and put it there, so we're trying to make sure that every department has the time that they need to be able to get. A handle on their records, because there's currently no real good filing system.
Do you have the proper equipment to scan everything like? And when you talk about things you're scanning, are you scanning like blueprints, stuff like that?
So those, the big, big stuff like that, we will hold on to for the time that is needed. Um, we do have a scanner that is able to scan those, but that would be up to those departments. But that's giving us the option that we can scan them in or we can hold on to them, so.
And the system is pretty intuitive that you scan it in, directs it where it's supposed to go, it's pretty.
You know, I remember when the buildings department spent. A sizable amount of money to have a lot of theirs scanned in and then no one can read it. So. I'm happy that you wanna scan it in and I'm happy that the Secretary of State thinks they have a, some kind of a thing that's gonna work. But you just need to really make sure and. I don't know if you're thinking about the stuff that's in the file cabinets. Because that is a, you gotta know the secret of that metal file cabinet, I I'm not denying that. That everybody has a different filing system and if you're looking for like license plate. You know, vehicle registrations, you've gotta know the right word or you're not gonna find it. So. But I also see that what the words I use. Are not the words you use or the words you use. And that is my biggest concern, I'm not opposed to you, I guess, not answering the phone for two days. But. I'm really always hesitant, I mean, everybody that knows me knows I love a piece of paper, so, okay. But it just makes me nervous when the newest employees. Come in and decide that they know how to redo the filing systems. Because you've known organization after organization. That that has been their downfall, is that the newest people come in and they have no idea about the. Why you'd want to keep that, I mean. Cause it might not mean anything to you. But there's times that it really means something.
Can't keep everything on paper too.
Oh, I'm, I just wanna make sure you can find it.
So I can file something electronically, I can't find it again.
Special software that we've purchased, um, we actually already have a live demo that we currently are using. So we get to test it, um, and if we test it correctly, they, you know, gave us all this information beforehand, Amanda and I. Said in all these meetings with them, um. If we put it in without using a live, oh, this is Scooby Doo's contract, oh, you know, like legit names and as if this was the real deal. Once our demo period is over, that will convert to our live data. So we're already able to start playing with it and if we have questions, if we get stuck. If we don't know, if we try to retrieve something like, okay, I've imported all this in, I found it in there, now you go try and find it. If we're running into any hiccups, we have this demo time that we can just call them up and, um, get the support, so by November. We'll be able to help the rest of the staff as well, but everybody would be archiving into this software, it's called Laser Vish. Um, and it is designed specifically for that for municipalities.
Nice, and and to answer the comment you made Karen about, we all have a different vocabulary. I mean, mine's even different than Marta's, because she talks finance and I talk planner. We've talked about like a master list, like a master alphabet list, so that, well, I think it should be called this. Oh, you called it that, okay, now at least I know where to go. So we're we're trying to address those things because.
No, and coming up with, uh, naming conventions, which means, you know, all your city council meeting minutes. Will all be named in the same format, that way it's not year first. Then the month and the day and then city council meeting or city council meeting, then the month, day, year, then you. So we're coming up with naming conventions so that everything is kind of uniformed the way it's being.
The dates correctly and whether you use a dash or a snatch or.
So that it's always all the same.
Brandon, to clarify, um, so on the fourteenth and fifteenth, when, um, you said I'm interrupt the time, is this just the? The staff city, including the planning or not?
Planning and building.
Yeah, we have our own archive room that's pretty bad too, so.
They just move, that's what I was gonna say, typically when you move, I I thought, okay.
Well, she cleaned out the old archive room and I, now I know why there's no planning records, because they were buried in the old archive room, they were buried.
Um, and then just to reiterate with what Chief was saying, um. With this shortage of officers and and trying to get ahead of. Um, the hiring process, I I may come in the future and I think we did talk about this during the, um. The planning budget meeting, the budget meeting. Um, to look ahead at hiring, hey, if we're gonna go, we have one opening now, maybe we're gonna hire two. Like two entry, one that's gonna be now and one that will be in the future, because again, it's a year process to get from higher to in the seats ready. So that may come to a point where we'll ask for a supplemental budget to be able to do something like that, to hire ahead. In order to keep ahead of the curve, kind of what we're looking at, okay? Um, and then. So the recycle center, we have the one back here behind the city, it is just cardboard, we have over the old community garden, there has been. Time and time again that it is just. Garbage being thrown in there and that most of that stuff is being taken directly to the dump. So what I'd like to do is consolidate, have one recycled center at the end of the driveway here. Push back the the dirt, it would be next year when we can pave, but it would be nice and paved, uh, the slots would be plenty of room. Uh, for for the. Trucks to come in, pull them up and and drop another one instead of having to, or or back and forth. So I would like to do that as soon as we get some paving, again, marking. Uh, recycle center up front and then another sign out in the back, we would add two lights. Um, there's one over on the senior center, that we would add a second one and then on the opposite nor, uh, west side of the basketball court, add a double light.
Cameras be there too?
Correct, we we do have cameras. There will definitely be sign that says, hey, you're on camera.
Cause even when we did, I think somebody put up a, what was it, a hunting camera or whatever and people still dumped their garbage.
And the hope is eventually you're gonna have to pass by police.
So you're gonna be less likely, hopefully.
Is that likely to come out of the building fund? The paving?
How hard would it really be to get curb recycling to each other?
I think that's coming, isn't it?
I mean, they're saying that the money that we're paying right now and in tax is supposed to fund it, I I don't know if it really is gonna happen.
Police by the management people.
Correct.
Really nice job of policing it in other towns.
And because of our population, we do qualify, so we are on the hook. Of having curbside recycling as soon as the state says, yep, the money's there.
The location for a recycle center over by Columbia is a really bad spot. It it it's just set up to be able to be a dump site, it really, it it's just a bad spot.
So, and it may be, sooner than later, we'll just get gravel and do it just to.
I think that will really improve. Your license plate will be seen.
So what makes you think this isn't a street out here?
Because we looked it up. It is a driveway.
Yeah, it's not a street.
Okay, so to town.
Goes north and south. And it will connect to Oregon Trail Boulevard.
And then when we looked, cause we did, we had that conversation like, oh, what is that, it's a driveway.
Because you know, you're taking a lot of overflow parking. Away from when we have meetings here and when the senior center has meetings. If you're taking, if you're, if you're using, are you using the pavement in front of the basketball courts where the curves are?
No.
Or you're knocking out the curves and you're gonna really do it right back there, yes, in back of the basketball court.
Yeah, in the grass area.
Okay, so you're not gonna take up the. Good job, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
You got the approval.
So, hey, I thought I was here to ask questions. What did you think? That is all I got.
I have a question. More or less. What I was told by. People in the community and concerns. That now truck traffic is supposed to go on Oregon Trail, come in the back way or semi truck. When person seeing there, they can't swing on line enough, make that turn. Get over to the center by.
Yep, that's gonna be removed.
I I watch it every day.
Part of it is, I don't.
They they don't, they don't, I I'm gonna tell you right now, now. When we get to the discussion about the median thing, that'll be different, but. Right now. I don't think there's a single semi truck driver that drives down Oregon Trail. They go right in and they turn around at the end because it's it's wide enough for them to do it. And they literally just turn around right there, it it, because that's what they did before. It's still the same size and they just turn around there and and I and I think. We we discussed about the placement of the sign, you cannot see that sign until after you've already made the turn.
Placement really.
So, and we we talked about that. Yeah, I li- I literally see it all day long and and that goes for RVs, long, I mean, I'm talking triple trailers, everything, everybody. They don't go down Oregon Trail at all and and I tell people about it and they're just like, eh.
No, that's that's good.
Thanks for putting the figures with the, uh, we got improvement projects this.
I think you're, if we're on the same page, I think you're probably already gonna say what I'm already thinking about Columbia Avenue.
You kinda held the meeting.
Yep, so, no, that's what I'm saying, I'm not gonna say nothing, you're you're probably thinking exactly what I'm thinking.
I'm gonna say something. Okay. Y- yesterday or the day before, sometime soon, you know, we are going to, uh. We, you know, we worked on the charter. And you have to put it out to the vote of the people, so we had some people questioning. About the wording and and they were upset about the wording and the wording problem was that the. Public notice says something about the, a new. Home, home rule charter, and so that made them think we were. Doing something new, so, you know, we tried to explain, so if you hear anybody out in the community, because most people. Will not understand. Or will be familiar with with what that whole ordinance is. Why they're voting on that, so, but just tell people that we didn't change things, you know, we spruced up the wording, you know, we made sure that. You know, like we were clear on how many, how the mayor still works and how the city council still works and all that, I mean, that it isn't. We aren't trying to reinvent the way that the city runs the city.
I'm sorry, I do have, I have a separate comment, so. I and I don't even know if it's our place to comment on it, but the the recent decision to move. Or build a county courthouse annex in Boardman. Some of the things I read was, you know, as far as people being against it was, um. Did we even ask Boardman if they wanted it there? And so I I don't know if I was ever asked, but I guess my point is, is if something like that is is coming. Should we sh- should we show our support for that as a council? As a city?
I heard today that the Hepner City Council is going to petition the county commission tomorrow morning. To not build the annex in Boardman.
And and I have been told there is a petition going around Boardman right now in support of that being kept in Boardman. So, and me personally, I, an annex building, I think makes sense just from the financial standpoint. I mean, the county already owns the land. You know, the proposed site of the fairgrounds was pretty much adamantly, everybody was against it. They were very vocal about that, and that's what, where we're at right now. And then the mill site was brought up, and that was kind of declined, because it was gonna cost another. Potentially three to, I think, five million dollars is what they were talking about, and that's. And they still didn't know if it was gonna be able to get built there after that, so that's why we're where we're at right now, so. I, I just thought it, it's worth bringing up, because it is kind of a big deal, and, um, but I did read that. As an annex, it's gonna be like they're gonna operate still in Hepner, they would operate in Boardman. Where they said, I think, eighty plus percent of the business is in Boardman already. And it made more sense financially to have an annex in Word. So.
And there's some, but there's some state dollars, there's something.
And, and yes, it like the state states, pretty much, I think, paying for all of it, is my understanding, like it has to be built. There's no, oh, we're not gonna build it, no, it has to be built. So.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, Richard got yours and mine, so.
Yeah, sorry.
So for the mayor comments, if you haven't, you send a letter of support to the commissioners, and you feel so inclined. They probably appreciate that, I definitely did that something. Uh, they're taking a lot of heat for what they're doing, and they pay a lot of heat for them, so. If you're in support of what the commissioners are doing, I would definitely let them know. Uh, mine is about the piazza at, uh, on Columbia. It is old, I've said that, I've kind of been as positive as I can in my mayor message. But I can tell you right now, the citizens on that street are done. And we talked about what we were gonna do at the end of, you know, and we may not, because the project took so long. But, you know, at least in the spring. No, I have a party.
I still want to.
You know, if, if we do it in the fall, we do it in the fall, but we better have a celebration, and if that means. Uh, doing something for the citizens, uh, who are affected by the water shut-off. Who are affected by the road construction, who are affected by holes in front of their property. Who are really.
Over it.
And they've been, they've been very patient, I think, now, I don't think it won't help as much as many of you do, but. Uh, when they do say some, have something, I said, call Brandon.
Yep.
And, uh, that's where I'm at, uh, so as far as the mayor's message, I've been as, about as. Positive as I can, and hoping that it comes to an end, so. Uh, we are gonna need to set up a celebration for that street, for those citizens that are impacted by that. And if we ever do shut the water off, we probably should call the, I spoke a little earlier. So, for sporting events, just if we know, now, if we don't know. Is we can always maybe change the location, I know Mr. Bor talking about that.
Well, I think the issue with turning off water, which maybe it can be avoided, but it. You know, everybody's home on Friday, student-wise, and so not having water for twelve hours. On the Fridays can be difficult.
I had a comment as well, um, so along the lines of, um, I think what Council Rockwell was saying. I don't know if we want to, as a council, be a little bit more vocal when it comes to some of these things, and I, and, you know, going back to the survey. One of the things that was listed was the, um, quality education, and that is also something else that will. Maybe impact our, our town. Um, with the school bond, and I, I've heard multiple times when things have come up, of working. With the surrounding communities, and that we always get accused of, Boardman wants to keep it all, even though it's in Boardman. Um, but when it comes to the bond. That is another issue. Because in the last one that they tried to push, Boardman was getting literally nothing. Um, although they were enticing you with the wrestling.
Yeah.
Um, and I suspect that this one will be the same.
I, I have heard very similar that. Literally, it was Boardman's getting nothing. And.
That's not true.
I, I'm just telling you, that's what's being said from, I'm saying, from, from committee members. Are telling people Boardman is getting nothing.
Compared, compared to stagnant. Not growing population in Hepner, we are getting nothing.
That, that is what committee, okay. I'm just telling you, that's what.
I'm just saying, we may want to consider, as a council. I think what Council Rockwell was saying with, with some of these issues, if we want to take on just, just like apparently Hepner's. City Council is doing, where we're voicing our support, or this life, or some of the, um. Things that are happening.
And there has been discussion with the school superintendent to, uh, attend the city county court meeting, the next one, so. So he would be able to present and share with the, you know, local leadership. Plans and stuff, so that is in the works.
You know, we're missing the debate.
We've already made most of it.
I've been watching it this whole time.
Oh, I, I heard, yeah, sorry, I was doing. So. Boardman City Council will now meet in executive session, session pursuant to the following. O R S one ninety-two point six six zero two E. Which allows the council to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the government body to negotiate real property transaction. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session in person. The public virtual Zoom meeting link will be closed, excuse me, during the executive session as permissible. Executive session meetings are not subject to House Bill twenty-five sixty. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose. Any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session. Except note, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session, at the end of the executive session, we will return to open session. The executive session is expected to last. For twenty minutes? Twenty minutes? Uh, action is planned after, if action is planned after, we resume the, that is my sense, but. Resume the council meeting, we will come back, we will announce whether we have made a decision or not. So I will pause the city council meeting at this time. Okay, we'll resume this, the city council meeting as we come out of executive session. Uh, do I have a motion?
I move that we. We're talking about selling that parcel?
Yep.
I move that we agree to sell that parcel to.
For.
For, uh, do we say, for fifty thousand dollars?
Okay.
Sorry, I wanted to make sure. All right, it's that, it's the old shop surplus.
Do we have to surplus it?
It already is.
Okay, to sell the surplus property.
Thank you. To sell the surplus. For fifty thousand, thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Hey, any other question about it, just down, we can talk in the open. All faves say aye?
Aye.
All close?
Aye.
Okay. The city council meeting is adjourned.